Good evening and welcome to the monthly Board of Education meeting for Elizabeth City Pasquotank Public Schools. ECPPS is a progressive public school district committed to reimagining education so that all students are given choices to discover and explore their hopes and dreams. And now to begin the meeting, Board of Education Chairperson Angela Cobb.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to return to open session at this time and welcome each of you to our Board of Education meeting for May. How is that even possible? May 27, 2025. At this time, would everyone please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Parker, could we have a roll call this evening, please? Chair Cobb.
Here.
Vice Chair Parezza.
Here.
Dr. Sheila Williams.
Present.
Tommy Old is not present. Ms. Boylan.
Here.
Valerie Boggs.
Here.
Sharon Warden.
Present.
Erica Moore.
Present.
Brandon Moore.
Present.
Ruby Nunez Anaya.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. At this time, Ms. Boggs, will you read our ethics awareness statement?
Welcome to the May 27, 2025 meeting of the Elizabeth City Pasquotank Board of Education. It is my duty to remind members of the board that it is your responsibility to avoid all conflicts of interest and potential conflicts of interest in accordance with Chapter 138A of North Carolina general statutes. As public servants, it is your duty to continually monitor, evaluate, and manage your personal, financial, and professional affairs in such a way as to ensure the absence of conflicts or potential conflicts. Does any member know of any conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest with respect to any matter coming before the board today? Let the record reflect that no conflict exists.
Thank you, Ms. Boggs. At this time, we need a motion to approve the agenda for our May 27 meeting as presented.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Warden and a second by Vice Chair Parezza. Do we have any discussion? If not, can we please see a positive vote with a show of hands to approve our agenda? Let the record reflect that vote is unanimous and Mr. Old is absent this evening. At this time, we are going to have our recognitions portion of our board meeting and I will be turning the meeting over to Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out and joining us this evening. We're really excited about some recognitions to share with you this evening. And we're going to start off by recognizing one of our community partners that really supported us here recently in a financial campaign to donate to the school system, and that is our local Jersey Mikes. And so we're going to recognize Jersey Mikes for highlighting us in their Month of Giving, in their Day of Giving campaign and all that they did. Ms. Parker, I believe we have some folks here this evening.
I called him earlier and he said he was unable to make it.
So we want to thank Jersey Mikes for their support and able to make it here tonight. But I want to publicly acknowledge the support of Jersey Mikes and in the Day of Giving where they identified us as the recipient of their Day of Giving campaign, the proceeds that they accepted from that particular day were donated to us here. And so that's going to be something that we use to help with teacher appreciation and teacher support and recognition. So let's give Jersey Mikes a round of applause. And in the spirit of giving and recognition, I want to move on to our next recognition. And we're going to ask some of our Northeastern friends to come forward here in just a minute. But you may have noticed on our stage up here is a brand-new baby grand piano that was donated to us by a community partner, Mr. Guy Rhine had this piano and we were able to find a connection with him through the Arts of the Albemarle. I want to thank Ms. Lauren Luther for bringing this opportunity our way. But Mr. Rhine was able to connect with us, wanted to find a new home for this piano. His only stipulation was that go to a place where students and staff would play it and it would bring happiness and joy to somebody.
P W Moore Elementary, we have Ms. Linasia Williams. Ms. Stephanie Ambrose is principal. Next, we have Ms. Josette Brookins, Sheeparney Elementary, Mr. Jonathan Snead, principal. We have Ms. Lisa Gaiet, Weeksville Elementary School, and her principal, Mr. Schiffauer. From Elizabeth City Middle School, we have Ms. Elizabeth Elliott. Ms. Bale will be accepting for Ms. Elliott this evening. Ms. Bale is the principal of ECMS. For River Road Middle School, we have Ms. Savannah Blystone, Dr. Bond is principal. Representing Passatank County High School, we have Master Sergeant Samantha Menton, with Ms. DeeDee Moore as principal. Representing Northeastern High School, we have Senior Master Sergeant Weeta Daniels, with Mr. Fawnville as principal. Representing Elizabeth City-Passatank Early College, we have Ms. Michelle Spence, with Ms. Lee as principal. We would also like to acknowledge Mr. Paulette from HL Trig. Thank you all again so much.
I want to say, just for a minute here, I want to thank Ms. Simona White for organizing our application for all of our schools to become Purple Star designated. The process and the work to support our schools to be able to get the application and then get it approved was no easy task, and so Simona took that on. This is a part of our broader commitment. As you know, Elizabeth City has been named a great American defense community. We're home to their Coast Guard base. We have JROTC, Air Force Programs, at both our high schools. And it's a part of our commitment to recognize the need for us to provide every available resource to our military-connected families, so they can find a home right here in our schools and that we can support them. So Ms. White helped significantly with that, so if we could just give her a round of applause, I'd appreciate that. And Mr. Lattimore, thank you for taking the drive down and supporting us and for organizing this across the state. And the state initiative has really taken off, and we're excited to be a part of it. We'd like to move on down and we'll ask student board member, Ms. Erica Moore, to recognize some Northeastern students. So if you would, give Erica a round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to recognize two students who are new to the Eagles Nest. These two boys are the kindest and most humble individuals I've ever had the pleasure of interacting with, and all of their classmates and teammates can attest to this fact. For those who don't know, Paul and Jordy are the two exchange students that participated in our study abroad program. Paul is from Germany and Jordy is from Spain. These two boys were heavily involved as they both participated in sports this year. During the winter, Paul played basketball and Jordy swam, making it all the way to States. And during the fall and spring, they both participated in cross-country and tennis. They were also recently inducted into the Northeastern High School National Honor Society. Even though they're returning home, I'd like to say that Northeastern was fortunate to have these two amazing students. I hope that you both carry the friendship you made and the memories you created. We hope the enriching experiences you encountered can be applied to your life back home and that you share your time spent with us, so we can have more exchange students visit rural America. I would like you all to give a round of applause to these two boys as they see the certificate of completion.
Thank you, Erica, for recognizing Paul and Jordy, and we echo those comments and send our best wishes in the remaining days of your time here in study abroad, and then hopefully your travels will bring you back to Elizabeth City one day. You're always welcome here. We'd like to stay on the theme of Northeastern, and I'd like to ask Mr. Daniel Manzer and Ms. Monica Manzer to come forward and share some exciting recognitions from some of their students. So if you would, welcome Daniel and Monica to come forward. We have several students to recognize tonight. We're going to start off with the young lady who finished her Agricultural Advanced Studies class with a concentration in agriculture. She specifically focused this year on agricultural literacy and has prepared a small presentation to you to explain the importance of agricultural literacy. So at that time, I'd like to call up Ms. Julie Simons to speak to you on behalf of Agricultural Literacy at Northeastern High School and ECPPS.
Good evening, everyone. When I was told I had to do for a presentation in this class, I did not realize I would have such a big audience. Let's start with, what do you think of when you hear the word agriculture? Most of you are probably thinking of something like this. Maybe like that. Or maybe even, the lovely cow. Before I became agriculturally literate, that's what I thought of too. Now, what does agricultural literacy make you think of? I can tell you that it's not just our farmer reading a book. Instead, agricultural literacy is everyday people having a basic education in agriculture. The American Farm Bureau Foundation defines it as "the understanding and knowledge of agriculture and its impact on society." This subject is a huge passion of mine and the reason that I took Advanced Studies of Agriculture and Natural Resources this semester. Through this class, I was able to improve my own knowledge and understanding of agriculture and seize opportunities to educate others about agriculture as well. As an FFA member for four years, through FFA, I've been able to lead events and encourage agricultural literacy in students from pre-K all the way to college. With all of this experience, I can confidently tell you that everyone needs to become agriculturally literate. Though society is uninformed about agriculture, supporting agricultural literacy is possible and will lead to a brighter future for all. So firstly, society is uninformed about agriculture. This may not seem like an issue, since most Americans live in cities and may never drive past a cornfield. However, people are so far removed from agricultural processes that they forget how important it is. Agriculture impacts our daily lives, from the food that we eat and the clothes that we wear, to our favorite team's sports equipment, and even the jobs that students choose after graduation. Let's look at an example. You walk into the grocery store to pick out a bag of your favorite potato chips, but sitting right next to it is a nearly identical bag labeled "non-GMO." Is it better to get the original chips that you love or to get the new non-GMO bag? Most people would tell you that non-GMO chips are healthier or better for the environment, but they can't actually tell you what GMO means or why one's supposedly better. An article on Ag Daily claims that people can't explain why people are buying the products that they are beyond basic reasons like price point. Consumers should know the basics of food labeling and the impact of food production methods have. Nowadays, everywhere you go, you're being swarmed by labels like vegan, organic, locally sourced, cruelty-free, non-GMO, and more. If you aren't literate in what these terms mean, how can you be sure you're making the right choice? Being an uneducated consumer can be a problem, but another problem comes from misconceptions. Just like the person in the previous example who told you non-GMO was better but couldn't tell you why, most people have opinions about agriculture that they can't defend. This is kind of a clear sign they don't know what they're talking about, right? We've all heard, "Don't believe everything you read on the internet," and in regards to agriculture, this is especially true. Many rampant misconceptions exist, and while some are harmless, others negatively affect public opinion of agriculture. For example, brown eggs are more nutritious than white eggs. Or cows are clawing global warming and we all need to be vegetarian. Or GMOs are bad for the environment and cause cancer. When you don't have a basic knowledge of agriculture, it can be hard to separate agricultural fact from fiction. Being uninformed about agriculture also means being uninformed about careers in agriculture. I've met a lot of students that say they will never work in agriculture, and that's mostly because they only think it's driving a tractor or planting corn. Some people also say there's no future in agriculture, or it's a dying career field. Many of these false ideas come because students are not taught agriculture in school. Soon, many students will be looking for permanent jobs in my graduating class, and without basic agricultural knowledge, some of these jobs may be hard to find or out of reach. These confused consumers, rampant misconceptions, and limited career opportunities are all effects of an agriculturally uninformed society. But there is hope. Supporting agricultural literacy is possible. There may seem like a lot you don't know, and I'm not saying you need to become an expert, but all of the previous examples that we've looked at are scenarios that you are very likely to encounter in real life. If we support agricultural literacy in our schools, we can better prepare students for facing these challenges, help them understand the importance of agriculture, and provide opportunities for them to experience different aspects of agriculture. An article written by Bill Taylor said that the most important step in bridging the gap in agricultural literacy is to not let the next generation leave grade school without knowing where their food comes from. Through our FFA chapter, we lead a variety of events where elementary school students get to learn hands-on about agriculture in the community, such as Wake Up to Ag Day and Plant with Pre-K. And all of these events are amazing, but as my project for Advanced Studies of Ag and Natural Resources, I wanted to take it a step further and actually go into the classroom to teach students about agriculture. I started by finding a teacher to collaborate with. Through this, I was able to teach two classes of kindergarten students. In order to prepare for this, I met up with the teacher, had a couple different meetings to see what the needs of her class were, what sort of subject she was interested in having me teach to her students. And then, after preparing a thorough lesson plan and different activities, I went into the classroom and I taught two classes of kindergarten students. But finding knowledge that met on their grade level, I started by just talking about the different parts of a plant. And we went through a different presentation. We sang a song that I wrote about the different parts of a strawberry plant. That was an adventure. And then, we did a different worksheet that they got to take home with also the parts of the strawberry plant. And, but the biggest part of my lesson that I stressed was talking about how strawberries in North Carolina get from the farm to their table, to the local grocery store, to their lunchbox. That these kindergarten students now know how food gets from the farm to their lunchbox. I mean, how many adults can't tell you that? If every kindergarten student understood this and we continued building on this knowledge throughout their years at school, they would graduate as an agriculturally literate student who is prepared to live in a world that is run by agriculture. I also got to read them a book. It was about a little girl who farms strawberries in her backyard and encouraging these little students to be able to read about other students who had that experience, who were able to grow strawberries, plant in their own garden, see agriculture in their own life, and to see how agriculture connected us to everyone. That some of these students halfway through raised their hand and said, "This reminds me just of the time that I went strawberry picking with my mom." Or, "My uncle owns a farm next door. I know all about tractors because he owns a wheat field." And even some of the students that said, "I didn't know food wasn't grown in the grocery store." But everyone has a connection to agriculture because we all have to eat. And so being able to make that connection with these students, and if we continued making that connection with these students, imagine where we would be as a society. Because now that we've seen how supporting agricultural literacy is possible, we can start to imagine the benefits of an agriculturally literate society. Agricultural literacy will lead to a brighter future. To see this in action, let's revisit those first examples and visualize how the problems that we can solve once you have a basic understanding of agriculture. All right, here we go. You find yourself back in the grocery store, looking for your favorite bag of chips, GMO or non-GMO. But this time, you've done your research, and this time, you know that GMOs aren't bad and actually help farmers to use less pesticides on their crops. Now you walk over to the refrigerated section to pick out some eggs. On the way, someone tries to tell you, "Brown eggs are more nutritious." But this time, you don't listen, because this time you know that eggshell color shows no difference in nutritional value of an egg. You also know that eggshells are different colors simply because they come from different breeds of chickens and that a chicken's egg color matches the color of their earlobes. Look it up if you don't believe me. Later in the day, you're scrolling through Facebook and see some video about cows causing global warming. But this time, you don't join the vegetarian movement, because this time you know that agriculture only accounts for 9% of all greenhouse gas emissions, and this number has been declining for over 50 years. Several years down the road, a student is looking for a full-time job. They think that there's no future in agriculture. But this time, you tell them to turn in their application anyway, because this time you've read an article that states agriculture is responsible for supporting nearly 23 million jobs, 15% of US employment. And this time, you know that these jobs aren't just in farming, but also in engineering, law, biotechnology, genetics, textiles, business, food production, and more. And the future is brighter because you know that agriculture is the future. In conclusion, everyone needs to become agriculturally literate. Today's society is uninformed about agriculture, resulting in confused consumers and rampant misconceptions. However, supporting agricultural literacy is possible by explaining the importance of agriculture to students while they're still in school and providing opportunities for them to experience different aspects of agriculture. And finally, agricultural literacy will lead to a brighter future by educating people on the importance of agriculture. So this is what I've learned through FFA and through my project in Advanced Studies of Agriculture and Natural Resources, that agriculture is one of the most essential aspects of all that we do. And when we fail to give our students a basic education in agriculture, we are setting them up to fail in the real world. Every student, every person must be agriculturally literate, and we must start this education in our schools. If we teach our students the importance of agriculture, then they will be prepared to face these problems and these examples and to make informed decisions, such as the GMO debate or about different farm bills, to be able to problem-solve an increasing population with less farmland, to know where their food comes from, and more. So, I encourage each and every one of you to pursue an agricultural education in your own life and to support agricultural literacy in students and schools. And I'll finish my presentation with this quote by Thomas Jefferson. "Agriculture is our wisest pursuit, because it will, in the end, contribute the most to real wealth, good morals, and happiness." Thank you.
As you can see, we've got some great ones. I'd also like to take the time to recognize the other students who are here with us this evening, who all received their, thank you, who all received their state degrees this year or last year. This is a really developed and long and extensive process. They had to do over 500 hours of work hours or amassed over $3,500 or equivalent cost in a project that they've done since their freshman year of high school. All of these students that are being recognized have done this and filled out the application painstakingly, right, guys? As we all suffered through, we got through it. So at this time, if I call them up, I'd like them to join us over here and take the certificate and be recognized for receiving their state degree, which they will pick up their gold chains and be part of our chain gang here at State Convention, and that will be in June here at the end of the month. So even after graduation, they don't get to get rid of me. They're still tagging along for another three weeks. So that's Mr. Joel Overman. Ms. Julie Simons. They both got it last year, so now are new inductions. Ms. Imogen Johnson. Ms. Nola Lee. Ms. Haley McDonald. And Mr. Logan Wininger, who is not with us this evening, but he is also being recognized with his state degree. All right, thank you, guys, for, first of all, let me just say again to Julie, like, that was an incredible presentation. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for sharing that and bringing that full circle at the end. That was incredible. And I think it speaks to the work of the program that Mr. and Mrs. Manzer have poured their heart into with the work that you've done here. So we want to take a moment just to recognize the incredible work, and I think there wasn't a better way to emphasize the value of agriculture education or FFA programs than the presentation that Julie gave. So we'd like, majority of the times that Daniel and Monica are here, they are recognizing their students, and then they do, just as they have done now, they have sat down. But this time, we're going to ask you to come up, and we'd like to recognize the two of you, and if you would, come over here and let's do a group photo. And as Mr. Fawn was coming over, we're recognizing specifically here the designation of the Gold Chapter in North Carolina for the number of recognitions at the state level and the national level that this chapter has competed in. So a very prestigious award, ranking you in the top of the chapters in the state. And so that takes leadership from the instructors, but that's also the incredible talent as well of our young people. So let's give everybody a round of applause.
Good evening, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perez, Board members, Dr. Parker, and all present tonight. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our 2025 Battle of the Books winners. Our Battle of the Book winners, they have read several books, and then all six schools, elementary schools, came together and they competed for points. In the end, the school that took first place was Sheeparney Elementary School. So we would like to honor them. So Battle of the Books representative, please stand, come forward, as long as, as well as your team members.
Ms. Sharna Edmondson. Ms. Edmondson was the, is the media coordinator at Sheeparney Elementary School and also the, one of the coaches for the Battle of the Books. Ms. Virginia Walton is a fifth grade teacher at Sheeparney, also one of our coaches. We have Ava Semino, Rex Johnson, Kang Lee, Denzel Johnson, Wendersen Jimenez Acosta. Congratulations. While Mr. Snead is walking over, I just want to say how much, how much of a congratulatory night this is for them. This took a huge amount of dedication to read through this entire list of books and to be ready to go into a quiz bowl-type tournament and competition. These kids withstood all of the pressure and came out victorious at the end of the The next group is a group of staff that have been very instrumental into the success that we've done this school year with our instructional leadership team. The instructional leadership team consists of Melissa White, Tammy Campbell, and not with us here today, Mr. Powell, Andre Powell.
The last group that we would like to recognize are two wonderful ladies. They are a very special part of our school community. They are not on our payroll, although I wish that we could put them up there. Combined together, they have over 300 hours of volunteer work with Northside. So we would like to recognize Ms. Julie Garrett and Ms. Emily Hicks.
Thank you. Wait, Ms. Emily?
All right, we are, got one more recognition that we're going to bring forward here, and then we're going to ask Ms. Prair to come back up and share her instructional highlight, which is a video that her and the school have prepared to highlight some of the work this year. But our final recognition this evening is to recognize our three current student board members who are completing their year of service on the Board of Education, and that is Ms. Erica Moore, that is Mr. Brandon Moore, and that is Ms. Ruby Nunez Anaya. So if you would give them a round of applause.
And we have a presentation we'll give to you in a second, but I want to say a couple of things, and then invite the board, if they wanted to share any comments or well wishes. But our three seniors here have served this year on the Board of Education, and this opportunity is something that the board brought three years ago, and is just a really incredible opportunity for students to have a role in the democratic process to serve on the Board of Education. And I think each year, our process and our development of the role has expanded, and this year, Erica, Brandon, and Ruby have really brought their character to the role and expanded in a lot of ways. But I'll just share a couple of things here. One, I think this year, the role of the student board member has really evolved and elevated into one that also includes advocacy on behalf of public education. And I think that is something that the role will continue to have at the heartbeat of it. But one particular point I'll share is when some members of the board, myself and the student board members, were invited to go to Raleigh and to speak at an event called the Public School Forum, that is a moment to recognize the accomplishments of public education, and also to advocate for that. And Brandon, Ruby, and Erica had an opportunity to stand up in a room full of about 500 people and speak from their heart. And one of the things that they encouraged everybody to think about in that room is the value of public school teachers, but particularly the value of public school teachers in rural communities that matter just as much as urban communities. And they spoke from the heart about the value of recognizing the value of eastern North Carolina, and what it means to the future of this great state. If we invest in our rural communities, we're actually investing in the future of North Carolina. And those are some of the words that they said. And so, we couldn't be more proud of your service on the board this year. We are very appreciative of all you've done, and we want to recognize you tonight. But before we call you up, I want to give an opportunity to the board to share any comments or reflections before we, we take a group photo.
I will begin, I guess. I just want to tell you, I've so much enjoyed having you on this board. You all are delightful, and you bring so much joy and laughter to the board, and we have appreciated you. Very intelligent, and I do want you all to know, they're moving very far away. One is going to New York, right, Syracuse? One is going to Howard in Washington DC, and I'm not sure about Ruby.
Chapel Hill.
Chapel Hill, okay, see, you know, more, but we're hoping they'll come back, right? We hope eventually, after four years, they'll come back and work in Pasquotank. But you've been a joy to have, and, and once we see you, we all begin smiling. And so, thank you. I, I just personally want to thank you for what you've brought to our board, and all the best to you.
Thank you.
Well, just like Sheila said, you guys bring a lot of fun and excitement to the board. Although, I think there were times this year that you almost broke my poker face, being across from me, so a little challenging sometimes, the three of you guys sitting right there staring at me. But really enjoyed you guys. I said at Erica's senior awards that, you know, this is one of the most exciting things that we get to do, is to select you guys. But it also is sad when we have to let you guys go. But we're proud of you. We know you're going to do amazing things, okay? We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for all the time that you spend. I see you in the schools with Dr. Parker, doing all the things you do. And then I was very amazed that you were at all the award ceremonies. You were the recipient of so many things, so many accomplishments that you have made, and I think that's amazing. So just thank you for what you've done and what you've contributed, and also for what you've accomplished. That's awesome.
I would put the three of you up against any students in this state, in this nation. If you all are indicative of what our school district is about, nobody's going to stop us from doing anything, because the three of you are amazing. And I cannot wait to see you coming back here in a couple of years. Tell us what you're doing, where you're at, what journalism you're covering, what, what business is going to be going on, what medicine you're in. But you're amazing. And every year, our student board members have gotten better and better, and I've said it, whoever comes next is going to have some hard shoes to fill, because the three of you are just the best of the best. Thank you for everything that you've done.
We're going to miss you. You, you three are just amazing. And it, you reiterate, I just, it reminds me so much of the times I've said over and over that Elizabeth City, Pasquotank County Schools has so much to offer as far as our students. And, you know, you, you represent that up here.
Top level, all the way. Go out and conquer the world.
Yeah.
We didn't plan it, but I'm kind of recognizing, it's kind of like on the news show when they say, "This is Sharon Warden reporting live from Elizabeth City." We kind of panned over to the, the news reporters in the field, so. But before we do a group photo here, Erica, Brandon, Ruby, if you'd like to make some comments, we'll, we'll open it up to you about your service on the board, and then we'll, we'll present you with some recognitions.
So first and foremost, good evening. I did have this planned for my highlights later on, but I would like to take this moment to express my heartfelt gratitude. Serving as the student board representative for Pasquotank County High School has been one of the greatest honors of my high school career. To be trusted with the responsibility of representing my peers, my school, and my community at this level is something I will always cherish. I would like to sincerely thank each and every one of you sitting here this evening for welcoming me, supporting me, and valuing the voice of students and the decisions that shape our schools. Your commitment to student success has been both inspiring and humbling, and it has been a privilege to learn from each of you. This experience has taught me the importance of advocacy, collaboration, and leadership on a larger scale. It has shown me how powerful student voices can be when given a seat at the table. Thank you for allowing me that seat. And for believing in the potential of students to contribute meaningfully to our district's future. As my time in this role comes to an end, I leave with a heart full of gratitude and deeper commitment to service and leadership. Thank you again for this incredible opportunity. It has truly meant the world to me.
Like Ruby said, I thought we were going to do this in our highlights, but first thing I want to say, I completely did this on a whim. I had friends that were like, "You should do it. We love your impressive school." And I'm like, "Why? Uh, no." And I can say that after doing this for the whole year, it has been probably one of the brightest highlights of my kind of high school career. I am so grateful for the opportunity you guys have given me to speak in front of people, giving, showing me the confidence that my voice does matter as a student, and giving me almost like a family. I never knew that we grow this tight-knit and have these connections, where we can text, and we can call, and we can laugh together, and we have our inside jokes and things like that. But I'm just beyond grateful for this opportunity. I know now that I will never shy away from a leadership role because of this. I'm always going to remember you all and all you've done for me, how you've helped me grow better, and advocacy and public speaking, and just sticking up for myself and for the little guy, because we do have potential as a community, and all these people need to know that Elizabeth City can and will achieve amazing things. Even the students that will come after us will just walk forward and strive forward to do awesome things, and I just can't reiterate enough how much of a blessing it's been to be a part of this, and thank you guys so much.
Last meeting, I kind of read my speech, so I don't really have nothing for y'all today, but, no, I'm just playing. I do, I do, I'm really grateful for the position that I was put in this year. I can say for myself, I've never had so many people say they were proud of me, and sometimes I don't even know what they're proud for, but it's just a point. It's just, I don't know, I've been accepted by so many in such little time, and it's kind of sad that it's coming to an end. And I thank the board for the opportunities y'all gave me, the times I got this so far. It's just really been an honor. I will read the speech again, because I'm, nobody, now everybody got to hear it, so now everybody gets to hear it. I want to sincerely thank the board for giving me this opportunity. From the very beginning, you welcomed me with open arms and treated my voice with the same respect and importance as everyone else at the table. That meant more to me than you probably realized. This experience has taught me so much, not just about how schools run or how decisions are made, but about leadership, responsibility, and the real impact a group of passionate people can have when they work together. You all showed me that students do have a voice and that ideas do matter. I also want to thank the staff and my fellow student board members, and also my family for their encouragement and support throughout this journey. It's because of all of you that I felt confident enough to speak up and to ask questions and to grow. Thank you all again.
Thank y'all for sharing that, and we're going to move to take a photograph, but we have a plaque and then a photograph for each of you, along with something to remember your time of service home. So having said that, we'll ask the board if, if we can come over to the, the backdrop here with the student board members.
All right, and Ms. Prair, thank you for waiting for us there. We're going to move into the instructional highlight now, so we're turning it over to you to introduce the video.
All right, good evening. I am back, and Julie shared about being agriculturally literate. Not only at schools is our academics important, but also addressing the social-emotional needs of our students. So the video that you will be seeing addresses how we are supporting our students and our staff through Calm Hearts, Calm Minds, Kind Hearts, as well as Character Strong, and I hope you enjoy it. Here at Northside Elementary School, we implemented Calm Minds, Kind Hearts, in addition to Character Strong. And one of the reasons why we integrated that into our Wellness Wednesdays practice is we wanted to meet the social-emotional needs of our students, but develop resilience within our teachers.
I'm August Gonzalez. I'm from Calm Minds, Kind Hearts, and I've been working with Northside Elementary this year, supporting their work with mindfulness and resiliency and social-emotional learning. Resiliency means to be able to bounce back from something hard, and mindfulness means paying attention to your life, here and now, with kindness and curiosity. And what we've been doing is offering lots of activities for the
"I want to sincerely thank the board for giving me this opportunity. From the very beginning, you welcomed me with open arms and treated my voice with the same respect and importance as everyone else at the table. That meant more to me than you probably realized. This experience has taught me so much, not just about how schools run or how decisions are made, but about leadership, responsibility, and the real impact a group of passionate people can have when they work together. You all showed me that students do have a voice and that ideas do matter. I also want to thank the staff and my fellow student board members and also my family for their encouragement and support throughout this journey. It's because of all of you that I felt confident enough to speak up and to ask questions and to grow. Thank you all again."
Thank y'all for sharing that. And we're going to move to take a photograph. But we have a plaque and then a photograph for each of you along with something to remember your time of service on. So having said that, we'll ask the board if we can come over to the backdrop here with the student board members.
Come on over.
All right. And Ms. Prayer, thank you for waiting for us there. We're going to move into the instructional highlight now, so we're turning it over to you to introduce the video.
All right, good evening. I am back. And Julie shared about being agriculturally literate. Not only at schools is our academics important, but also addressing the social-emotional needs of our students. So the video that you will be seeing addresses how we are supporting our students and our staff through Calm Hearts, Calm Minds, Kind Hearts, as well as Character Strong. And I hope you enjoy it. Here at Northside Elementary School, we implemented Calm Minds, Kind Hearts in addition to Character Strong. And one of the reasons why we integrated that into our Wellness Wednesdays practice is we wanted to meet the social-emotional needs of our students, but develop resilience within our teachers.
I'm August Gonzalez. I'm from Calm Minds, Kind Hearts. And I've been working with Northside Elementary this year, supporting their work with mindfulness and resiliency and social-emotional learning. Resiliency means to be able to bounce back from something hard. And mindfulness means paying attention to your life here and now with kindness and curiosity. And what we've been doing is offering lots of activities for the teachers so that they're feeling capable and able to be with their students and support them with all the work that they're doing. And they've also been sharing different practices with their students to support them in being able to take tests, to communicate, to be able to name what they're feeling, and be able to be in relationship with one another.
What I've seen this year with the kids is I'm noticing, you know, when they get upset, they raise their hand, "Can I go to the calm down center?" And I say, "Sure." They go back and they use it, and they can figure out how to calm themselves down, because it's a lifelong skill. It's something they can do at home, at school, everywhere. And I just feel like it's very helpful for them as a person, not just in school.
As school counselor for Northside, we recognize the need for increased learning in SEL services for our students. We're using a curriculum called Character Strong. We concentrate on the character trait of the month, and at the end of that month, the student is recognized for that character trait. A lot of our students have difficulty with coping. So Character Strong is a way to use the curriculum to help our students learn those skills needed.
So one of the things that we've been talking about is positive self-talk. A lot of us tend to have like a negativity bias, where we kind of focus on the things that are hard or challenging in our lives. And if we make a mistake, then we're kind of reliving that over and over again. And so part of what we do is talk about the ways that we can talk to ourselves in ways that are encouraging and positive. And some of the ways we've been doing that is with activity that is kind of finger affirmation, where we'll kind of touch the tip of our fingers. One, two, three, four.
Like, "One, two, three, four." Like, "You can do it," or "You got this," or "You rock," to help me calm down.
I learned how to be patient, because when you're not patient, you can get frustrated or overwhelmed. Mindfulness helps us calm down.
Mindfulness activities are really important in the lives that we lead now. There's so much pulling at our attention, there's so much stimulus, there's so many things that are uncertain, and change is always happening. And so how do we meet those things in a way that are skillful? By slowing down, paying attention to our lives, and trying to orient to the choices that we make with a little bit of kindness and curiosity. And that's why mindfulness is so important.
Okay, lots of recognitions this evening. And now it's time for us to move on to the public comment section of our board meeting. Each month, the first part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. The following directions for participation do apply. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comment. Sign-up sheet will be available 30 minutes before the meeting begins for an individual or group to sign up. During the public comment period, the board chairperson will recognize speakers in the order in which they sign in. When the name is called, please approach the podium without anything in hand except paper or index cards if needed. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. The chairperson will preside over the public comment period. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The speaker will be made aware when his or her three minutes is up, and at that time, the speaker must leave the podium without comment and either return to his or her seat or leave the meeting. This evening, we have one individual who has signed up for a public comment. That is Ms. Elizabeth Shaken. Ms. Shaken, you can take the podium. Ms. Parker will be your timekeeper. She will let you know when to begin and when to end.
When I started to advocate for the program leader in me, Chad with the Franklin Covey Foundation encouraged me to reach out to my fifth grade teacher. Todd Moskowski inspires me in ways that I am still only coming to understand. He is a teacher who sees the very best in his students. He focuses on the good and inspires them to look to the future. He would warn us against wrongdoing and motivate us to work together. When I reached out to my fifth grade teacher, he reminded me that I was one of the few girls who played flat football during recess. I guess this shouldn't surprise me. I've always been determined and headstrong, not caring about limitations if I found a common interest. I don't remember being one of the few girls on the team, but I do remember my fifth grade teacher looking directly at me and saying, "Shake and bake." I knew if I could get away from my opponent, my coach would throw the ball to me. And more than anything, I wanted to catch the ball. I may have only caught the ball once, but I suppose now having the perspective that I was one of the few girls on this team gives me some clarity. I was learning new skills, playing a game I had never been exposed to before, and disadvantaged, because when compared to a boy, I am inherently different. Every time my coach looked at me and said to shake and bake, he was seeing my potential. Despite my limitations, I was a valued member of his team. The presentation I sent in preparation for this meeting includes relevant information on ECPPS's four-year graduation rates, student enrollment compared to surrounding districts, forecasted public school enrollment in the state, and a comparison to the Dare County Schools, where the dual-language immersion program has been sustained since 2018. The information I present aligns with Dr. Parker's vision to reimagine education for ECPPS and explores strategies for sustaining student success while pointing us to the future. In the 21st century, discussions around opportunity scholarships, charter schools, and equitable educational outcomes significantly influenced parents' school choices. Simultaneously, ongoing debates in family life concerning abortion, LGBTQ+ rights, divorce, and access to birth control and pornography have contributed to a three-decade decline in birth rates. This historic low is significant, with global evidence suggesting profound economic and societal impacts for the next several decades. ECPPS: Shake and Bake.
Thank you, Ms. Shaken. That is the only public comment we have signed up for this evening. And now we are going to move on in our agenda to our next item. And I never do it with notes. Usually I wing it, so just bear with me. Simon Sinek once said, "Leadership is not about being in charge. It's about taking care of those in your charge." Two former leaders in Elizabeth City acted upon that advice. Kater Harris and W.C. Witherspoon. The Witherspoon-Harris Award is named for the late Kater Harris, a white business owner, and the late W.C. Witherspoon, a retired black educator who in the 1980s became the first African-American elected to the Pasquotank Board of Commissioners since Reconstruction. In the 1990s, these two community leaders formed the Hope Group, a panel of private citizens active in bridging racial and other divides in Elizabeth City through dialogue and face-to-face engagement. About a decade later, following up on the Hope Group's work, Elizabeth City's City Council and the Pasquotank Board of Commissioners agreed to form the Community Relations Commission. This commission presents the Witherspoon-Harris Award each year to local citizens who have made an extraordinary community impact on Elizabeth City-Pasquotank County. Leaders craving the spotlight often miss the path to true greatness. Great leadership actually happens behind the scenes, where selfless acts, not showy stunts cultivate the kind of team that people love to be on. That's all the reading part. The rest of it's from the heart part. We have an educational leader in our county who does not like to be in the forefront, and he's going to probably kill me for this after this is over. He doesn't like to be in the forefront. He likes to be behind the scenes where he can support his staff's growth and his students' achievement. But obviously, other people are noticing that that is the epitome of true leadership, because the Witherspoon-Harris Award recipient this year was Dr. Keith Parker. So we did a little reconnaissance. Witherspoon-Harris Award, promoting educational programs in recognition of Dr. Keith Parker, bestowed this day upon citizens who have made extraordinary community impact and contributions to Elizabeth City-Pasquotank County. You support the primary goals of the Human Relations Commission. Presented by Elizabeth City-Pasquotank County Human Relations Commission, Sheila Simpson-Chayr 2025. Come up, Dr. Parker. Dr. Parker told no one he won this award. We found out secretly that he did, and therefore, we had to make sure that a person that makes sure that everybody else is recognized for the good work that they do, that he also be recognized for the good work that he is doing. And the student board, and every, all the boards.
Thank you, thank you. I can multitask real fast.
Next month, when y'all have a new board chair sitting here, y'all know what happened. Just saying. And not to put the spotlight on him, but now it's time for the superintendent's report. So that's what's up next on our agenda.
I suppose one of the points of privilege of being board chair is you can add things to the agenda. So I don't think I can take action on that. But no, in all seriousness, thank you, Ansel, for those kind words. And I appreciate the board and the comments there. We also would be remiss if I didn't mention this, but we also had several staff and students that were recognized by the Human Rights Commission as well that evening. So to them, I want to say thank you for your work. And you read a bit of the introduction, but what a great legacy of two men here in Pasquotank County working across racial lines in a time when that wasn't something that wasn't legal or even considered something that happened. So, you know, even on our darkest days, we, the heart of Elizabeth City is good. And so I appreciate all those things. On the report this evening, I think what I would just say is, I think the recognitions this evening and the comments toward our student board members and our schools and our staff have really spoken loudly, and I don't have anything significantly to add to that. But what I will say is, as we move into the last two weeks of school for our traditional schools, early college, having graduated a weekend ago, that we're really excited about the opportunity that awaits for our students. We began testing last week, and we'll resume testing our elementary and middle schools tomorrow, and then our high schools begin on Monday. And so we are making every day count. This is a culmination of our 60-day plan, which is now students show up on game day, and they get an opportunity to prove all the things that they learned through the year. And that's what those tests mean. They're a way to prove things, not a way to take away. And so that's what we're going to do in the days ahead. And to everybody that is working really hard during this time when a lot's going on and it's a high-paced, high-stress moment, I want to say thank you to all the staff for everything that they're doing. And again, thank you to the board for the comments and the recognition. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, next, we're going to move on to Vice Chair Perezza and our student board members' reports.
Okay, thank you, Chair Cobb. If these student board members have reports that they'd like to give out tonight, or did you, what you said earlier, what you have prepared?
Okay, I do have my highlights prepared for this evening. But it is crazy to believe that we have made it to our last board meeting together. It's been an amazing year, and I'm super thrilled to have got to experience this with you all. So now into this month's highlights. We've been super busy. Our sports are winding down, but I would like to congratulate our track team. Mario Mingo placed second in triple jump. Jayon Harris placed second in the 100-meter dash, third in high jump. Morris Burnham is conference champion in discus, setting a new record for our school, second place in shot put. Our boys, four-by-one, won second place. Jashaw Wilson placed second in discus. Tajae Riddick placed third in the 400-meter. Shanaya Harris placed second in the 100 hurdles, third in triple jump and 300 hurdle. And our girls, four-by-one, are conference champions, and that team consisted of Leona Butler, Jewel Chadris, Kalia Person, and Shanaya Harris. Anila Bo is conference champion in high jump, long jump, and triple jump. And Shanaya Harris, Anila Bo, and Jashaw Wilson advanced to states where they competed at ANT. Three of our female athletes signed their letter of intent to play college sports. Anila Bo is playing basketball at ECSU. Emma Bailey is playing softball at Newberry College in Newberry, South Carolina. And Ariana Skills is wrestling at University of Mount Olive. Our Booster Club hosted our annual athletic awards banquet, and a lot of our athletes got recognized for their hard work and commitment to their teams. I would like to congratulate Logan Schiffauer, our male athlete of the year, and Emma Bailey, our female athlete of the year. Logan also won swimmer of the year, and he has set new school records. Emma was awarded a scholarship, which was a new initiative that the Athletic Boosters launched this year. We are super proud of these two. And our very own Ms. Kita Wiggins made it as one of the finalists for District Teacher of the Year, and we are super proud of her. I personally love her, and I'm glad she was able to get recognized for all the hard work she's dedicated to her students and her school. Our choir hosted their spring concert earlier this month as well, and we also had a career fair and family field day with the intent of finding your E. We had several community members, military branches, and employment places come out and interact with our student body. And our AFJ ROTC unit had our end-of-year promotion ceremony, where we presented our new change of command. And I'd like to congratulate Ashelle Crawford as the newly selected squadron commander. I trust the unit will be in good hands. And we are also preparing for exams. Teacher-made exams begin this week, and EOCs begin next week. This was a busy month for our seniors as well. We had senior scholar awards, senior awards, the senior walkthrough, which was an emotional time as we reflected on our journey from elementary, middle, and high school. And as I close tonight, I would just like to thank each and every one of you once again for allowing me this position. And to Brandon and Erica, I really appreciate you guys. I'm stoked to see what we do after high school, and I pray we keep in touch. Thank you for allowing me to meet some of my best friends. And thank you to the Board of Education. I'm forever grateful.
So for Northeastern's report, we had many events taking place this year, well, I guess this month, as we're winding down towards graduation. Senior Scholars was on May 1st. POM took place on May 3rd, which was very awesome, I'm going to add. SAT Awards were on May 14th, followed by our senior awards on May the 15th. We have concluded our AP testing, which I'm so happy to be done with. Oh my gosh, calculus, never do it again. SENUS testing for our individual courses will begin next week. Northeastern seniors, we had our senior field day last Tuesday, which was a lot of fun. And then Mr. Vonville and I had a meeting with some of our juniors interested in the senior, in the student board member position. And we had 10 juniors attend the meeting, so I'm very excited to see who is going to apply and who you guys are going to see in the interview. And then SGA will be hosting a senior sunset on June the 5th. And then we graduate on June the 7th. I don't know if I can say thank you a million times for this opportunity to meet amazing people, get, talk with awesome people. It's been an honor and a blessing to be a part of the board. It's been an honor and a blessing to be a part of the board. Honestly, never going to forget, I'm going to look back, probably laugh at all of our moments together, because we definitely have had some interesting ones. And just like Ruby said, I'm so grateful to have met Brandon and Ruby, the two of them. They've just made my high school experience so much better, getting to be able to be raw and have authentic relationship with them, and I can't wait to see what we do in the future. And I hope we stay in contact as well. And thank you, guys, again.
Well, guys, I don't really have much. I'm out of school, so I emailed my principal. Basically, we had 29 graduates from the early college. We had 26 graduates receiving associate's degrees from COA. And our summer retest program began today, and all eligible students were in attendance. That's all I have. Y'all, I graduated, though. I can say that, we graduated. Woo! I think for the opportunity, I'm grateful for Erica and Ruby. Again, this is nothing but God-given. And I hope to keep in contact with everybody I've met down the way, and I will be taking donations down the way, too, but y'all can just contact me on that one. That's all.
You want to, you talking about Cash App, Venmo, some of that?
Cash App is...
No, 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 okay, I'm going to have to intervene, all right.
That's all.
All right, thank you, guys. Now, we're going to move on. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, can I get a second? I got a second. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Dr. Williams. If there's no discussion, can we please see a positive vote with a show of hands? Let the record reflect that is unanimous. And now I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Parker for items for information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think on the next part, we see some items for new business right here, and I'll defer to Pam or Rachel to give us some information about the CIPA notice.
It's Heather.
Okay, Heather, would you like to come forward and give some information on that?
Yeah, we are going to keep this short and sweet, okay? So my name is Heather Edmiston. I'm the Director of Technology for the District. The Children's Internet Protection Act, we know it as SIPA, is mandated by the federal law enacted by Congress to address concerns about access to offensive content over the internet on school computers. This is the annual notice that our school district is compliant with the Children's Internet Protection Act, providing technologies that go above and beyond content filtering to ensure our children are protected. We are mandated to do this on an annual basis, and we are compliant with the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Okay, now we're going to move on to new business.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. And we'll move on now to the AIG plan, and Dr. Katina Waipul is going to come forward to summarize that, and that will be an action item.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, Dr. Parker, and colleagues. Tonight, Michelle Flock, our AIG lead, is going to share with you our 2025 to 2028 state-required AIG plan. After she's finished, we will take questions. Also to let you know that we did link the copy of the state plan to your agenda, so that you have that. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. As Dr. Waipul said, I am just here to give a quick overview of the AIG plan. Every three years, it is updated with North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and we have an AIG advisory board that is comprised of many stakeholders. This is our current board, advisory board, that was part of the plan this year and part of the feedback. We have parents, community board, community members, Coast Guard, higher education, we have a board member as well, and several ECPPS staff. Some wear multiple hats, they might be a staff and have been involved in AIG or have an AIG parent, family member. Our program goals were partly put together through our AIG advisory, and one of the questions that came up was that it had looked like our numbers had gone down. And so one of the ones was to continue to increase identified, especially looking for the underrepresented populations in our community. And to expand the K-2 whole group enrichment lessons was an idea that was discussed as a way to get them earlier in the elementary schools, and then improve our AIG section on the district website. So just have more information and resources within where our plan is located, as well as a possibility of a maximum of two elementary schools per facilitator and group the secondary schools was another idea that was shared with us. So currently, we have Sarah Byram at the high school, has a, she's a core teacher as well as a facilitator. Myself, I'm at four schools, one middle and three elementary. Marie Moss is at one elementary and three secondary. And Jill Turner is the media coordinator for PW Moore, as well as the AIG facilitator. Northside was technically vacant, however, services were being met through the teachers and STEM positioned through electives for the end of the year. Staffing for our upcoming year, we have one vacancy posted and another is projected. We have a retiring facilitator, and so that will have three full-time facilitators and then our two split positions. Currently, in the fall, or in the fall, we had 178 identified for the fall headcount. When we did spring headcount for April 15th, we had 210 identified, and three additional have been identified since headcount, so it's not in that number, so we're at 213. And then our numbers for the each individual schools. The major plane, plan changes that were put into our draft plan was the Naglieri test. We just created a smoother verbiage of that it can be used in conjunction with the COGAT or it can actually be used as a standalone, because it is a nationally-normed ability test. And that is something that we went through last year when we were doing our book study with Dr. Joy Love, and this is a test that is recommended to reach some of the underrepresented populations at times. As well as, we've also identified an EOG achievement pathway. So students that meet a level five for two years in a row on their EOGs can use that as an achievement score within their ability testing and their achievement testings instead of the ITBS or Iowa. Transfers will be brought in as what they were from their transferring school, if it's out of our city or out of state. Currently, in our plan, we bring them through a retesting or a short retesting. We are not advocating for de-gifting any child, so we will just continue with their active identification from their previous school. And then the state already has some legislation for level-five math scores that are in that those students need to be receiving some enrichment or opportunities for higher math engagement time. We are going to take the proactive, because we have a feeling that if they're doing it for math, it only makes sense that they do it for reading as well. So we've gone ahead and put that in our plan, that students that score a level five will be offered some enrichment activities in the areas of reading as well. AIG offers that individualized time with some like-minded peers for them to work on activities that may be their choice, or it could be student-driven, it could be teacher-driven, it could be a group project, or it could be individual. So just a multitude of things. And then I've just listed a few opportunities that we have been able to do with students through the years in AIG. And we'd like to thank you in advance for reading the plan. It was 50-some pages of a lot of boring, so thank you for taking your time to read that. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a thank you, because, yeah, I was on the advisory group, but I have actually written this plan before, so I know how intensive it is and the work that this board, especially you and Ms. Moss and some of the other staff members, have put into revamping this to make sure that it is in the best interest of our students. We really appreciate. I think there's been, things kind of ebb and flow, and I see us being more proactive towards serving our AIG students with the ideas that are in this plan, and looking at, like you said, not trying to not serve gifted students, but looking at alternative ways to recognize giftedness. So thank you to you and your team.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I would like to just, again, thank the, the, oops, sorry, I bumped that. The advisor, the advisory committee, we met hours during the school year, tons of conversations. We had homework, virtual meetings, and it was really, the feedback was wonderful. The multitude of community members and key stakeholders that we had involved in the process really did help us to just see things differently, from the Coast Guards to teachers to parents, to parents with kids that have graduated. The feedback was amazing. So for those of you at home watching, we appreciate you. With that being said, Board, we would like to know if you would be willing to approve our 25-28 AIG plan, so that we could submit it to the state.
Okay, so with that being said, we are looking for a motion to approve item A. Okay, we have a motion to approve item A, the 25-28 AIG plan. Can I get a second?
Second.
Who was it? Sharon, okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Bowlen, a second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion about the AIG plan? Okay, if not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Did you have a question?
Clarification is on our papers, 25-26, but it is 25-20.
Yeah, it's a three-year plan, yes, yes.
It's just written as 25-26.
Okay. One more time, show of hands. Okay, let the record reflect that that is unanimous vote with Mr. Old being absent. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to the Northside Fire Alarm Panel.
Dr. Parker, Superintendent, Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Distinguished Board. I stand before you this evening, we have two items on the agenda, the first being the Northside Elementary Fire Alarm replacement, and we are asking for your consideration and approval this evening to approve the quote included in your packet, so that we can proceed with that repair. Are there any questions?
I have one. So is this the only quote for the fire alarm, or there are none other?
We did not solicit another quote. This is the company who has been trying to maintain and repair that system for us, and they're most familiar with it, and that would have taken additional time with the fire marshal stating that we have to get that repaired, and that's why we are proceeding with that one quote. Okay, so we are looking for a motion to approve item B.
Make a motion to approve item B, the Northside Elementary School Fire Alarm Replacement in the amount of $99,625.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this Northside Fire Panel? If not, please indicate your positive vote with a show of hands. Let the record reflect that is unanimous, except for Mr. Old. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Warden.
Also, we have in the packet this evening the presentation for schematic phase of the Early Childhood Development Center, which will take place in this actual facility. And we have our design team, Collier and Associates, here to go over that presentation, to have your consideration and approval to proceed to the next phase in the design of that project. And Alex.
Thank you very not, very much for us having us here. It was a wonderful intro, or great students in the school system, so it was really pleasurable just listening to all the great things you all are doing here. So we'd like, I'm Ann Collier with Oakley Collier Architects. Alex Veman is our project manager for this project, and we're working together to give you an update tonight. So I'll just start with where we have been, and then where we are heading and where we are right now. So just to brief you a little on what we've been doing the last couple months, we've been making multiple site visits to review the existing conditions, again, just in a couple wings over that way on this campus. We have also had engineering come and look at the existing systems in this building or where we are working to review those, getting our plans all set in motion for what we want to propose to you tonight. We have visited with Ms. White, the director for the existing, our current pre-K program, reviewing her operations, receiving input from them and your staff on things that are priorities and important for your, for this project. We are in the middle of sort of a schematic design and design development phase, is what we're calling it, where we're reviewing program requirements. The classroom designs are underway, looking at budgets, and then the site survey work for the campus, because we are looking at the outdoor playgrounds. We have contracted with the site surveyor, and that is underway right now. Excuse me. And that leads me to tonight, when we're presenting this all to you. So just as a, as a overview, we, oh, I can't do it on the TV. We are in the multipurpose room, obviously, you all are familiar with that, and the area in orange is the area that we're targeting for the early childhood programs. Can see some other, there are other programs on this campus as well, but if you'll notice to the plan south of the page, we have an existing, very nice playground that was, was just fairly newly installed, I believe, last year, and we're looking at some playground expansion to its left. Also, creating a new cover drop-off at the front of the Early Childhood Center at the drive-by parking. Buses will continue, just will go into the site and drop off and then come across to come in the main entry or down to the Early Childhood Center. There is, there's a blue dash line, I just want to point that out to you. There is a creek, a ditch, some things there, so those are some things we're working around as we're uncovering what's happening on the site, so we're not going to mess with that. We don't want to do anything to do, make that any worse. And there's room, there is room for additional playground expansion, and we have talked to Ms. White about that. Also have been, everything is being designed according to Department of Public Instruction standards for early childhood. So this is a well-loved building, and we want to continue to help make it, continue to be well-loved. But we, some of our existing condition survey, you'll notice, the plumbing fixtures, the bathrooms, all of those things are in, are in not great shape, and they're not large enough, actually, either, to meet accessible, accessibility requirements in building code. We found some good things. There's a new boiler, a fairly new boiler, so that's in good shape. So we're trying to utilize things that are really good and replace things that are, that are not in good shape. You'll see there's a lot of color in the classrooms. We're also looking at existing finishes. There's our new playground to the bottom right-hand side, it's really great. The middle photo is the, the new, what we're going to call the new secure entry. Our plan, and you'll see in a moment, is to add another set of doors so that lockdown campus, so there's not just a direct entry to the outside, we'll have a foyer or an airlock, if you will, so there's actually, does a couple good things. One is provide extra security for... One is provide extra security for that, the classroom wing, as well as provide a place where, when one door's open, the air can stay there and not cool off the building when the cold winter months are here. The ceilings and a lot of the hallways are not in great shape, so our plan is to replace those. Classrooms are in better shape, so we may replace some of the, some of the ceiling, but not all the grid, so those technical things. And then one of the things on our wish list is to look at this front entry, the main in the bottom right-hand corner, and to see if that's some, we can improve that tile is not in great shape there either, so come in in the main entry of the school. When we visited the current pre-K program, it was just exciting, because there's lots and lots of great things happening there, so we wanted to review their operations, the way it's currently, current rooms are laid out, plus also the conditions of the furniture, because we wanted to consider, does that need to be replaced? It's, most of it is in really, really good shape. So our intent, where we are right now, is to continue to bring that over here, and there may be a few things that would need replacing, but generally, the furniture's in very good shape. So as, as an overview of the plan, this is half of this school, so we're not showing this half of the campus where we are now. The front doors is right on the north side of the gray area, which is the cafeteria kitchen, and so everything else that's colored on that page is the area that we are looking at and designing for either community resource or pre-K program. What that looks like, it's about 24,000 square feet. Of that, the active pre-K classrooms are around 18,000 square feet, and within those, there are 12 classrooms, a resource classroom, which will have speech, OT, special services. Two of those 12 classrooms are special needs classrooms, so there's a little different design in there. The existing toilets are in good shape, we're gonna give them a good cleaning, we will replace some of the fixtures that are in need of replacing, but generally, the tile's in good shape. There is some cleaning that needs to be done, so we'll freshen those up. And that is all in the bottom half of that plan. The areas at the top in green, that is the existing office area. We propose just to use that again for the, the office space that's needed by the program, which would be listed there, director, assistant, there's a nurses' room already there, that's a great thing to have in this program, conference, workroom, toilets, et cetera. We are gonna reuse the existing cafeteria and kitchen, as well as this multipurpose space as needed to support the program. Media center is also there and used as a resource for staff as well. You'll see the, the portion of the plan that's in blue at the top right-hand side of the plan, that's what we designated for community resource. So there are several office spaces that are in good shape, as well as a room that's larger that can be used for community outreach and tutoring and different things that happen in that program. Again, our, our pre-K drop-off will happen at the far-right end of the purple wing classrooms with the secure entry, and we will, again, separate the cars and the buses. This is a little hard to read, but it's a blow-up of the plan. I'm gonna go to the next one, where we will show you a little larger look of a typical classroom. So every classroom that's in this will get the following things. This is where we're working through right now, what that looks like in the plans. New accessible pre-K toilets, so we're gonna tear out what's there in the same locations, generally, a couple classrooms don't have them, and we will add them, but tear out what's there and then put back appropriately-sized new toilet rooms. We will create a new exterior, or entry or exit to the playgrounds from each classroom, so the kids can directly enter the playground where that, those classrooms are. And then again, we'll have a new teaching wall. We're gonna create, we have, it's really on the dividing wall on the right-hand side of that, that plan, in this particular location, but they usually, one whole wall will be teaching wall, and the rest will have centers and other appropriate pre-K programs in the classroom. There is a place, we have added, designed and added, brand-new storage units for teachers, for children. There will be a sink in each classroom for the students to wash their hands when they come out from the playground, as well as one in the toilet, obviously. New student, or student cubbies are in there, reading nooks, manipulative play, all of the programs that pre-K have in the classroom. And Alex has done a great job creating these images, so you can see sort of in our mind what it looks like. We wanna add some color in the rooms. We will replace window treatments and freshen up all the finishes, so flooring, ceilings, lighting, mechanical systems. Their mechanical systems are being reviewed right now with our engineer to see what the existing systems are capable of, how much we can, should change, need to change, don't have to change. We don't wanna just do that if it's not necessary, so we're evaluating all of those systems right now. And then, where we are, just as our, in our task list, so we're just a few steps down, working towards construction documents, that's our bidding set. If you all are okay with where we are right now, we'd like to move forward to look at getting those completed by the end of June. When those are completed, we will send them to Department of Public Instruction School Planning Division for review and approval, and so while that process is happening, we will put contractor pre-qualification packages out. So that is just announcing the project to the general contracting world in the areas, ones we know, ones we don't know, just to see who's interested, and letting them submit their qualifications back to us. That will help with bidding to get people out, to understand what the project's about. And so as DPI, I've understood, this is not a set time, but I understand they're taking anywhere from, you know, 30 to 45 days right now, so we're hoping for the shorter time, but we planned in for the worst time in here, so it could, this could get a little better. We are estimating that approval date to be in early August, and we will have had, again, all of our pre-qualifications done for contractors and notified and be ready to bid at that time. With that release, we would expect to receive bids in early September, and have you approve them at your September board meeting. So that's in our mind, our schedule for you. If that all happens, our notice to proceed could be issued in late September, early October, and the last date, May 15th. I think we can do better than that, but again, I don't wanna bring something that's not realistic. You know, there are a lot of things out in the construction world. We hear a lot of, like, electrical panels are very long lead times or mechanical units, so with, right now, we're just uncovering what that looks like. But I don't expect it to be any later than that. So that would be a next summer opening for this summer. So our next steps, we would love to have you all answer any questions you have. We'll continue to bring things to your team, we'll continue to bring additional information to you as you desire, and we are really excited about working on this with you. Any questions?
Thank you all so much. We are looking to have a motion to approve item C.
Make a motion to approve item C, the Early Childhood Learning Center Schematics, as presented by Oakley Collier.
Okay, have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, or do we have any additional questions for our team members here? Okay, if not, please signify a positive vote with a show of hands. Okay, let the record reflect that that vote is unanimous. Thank you both so much.
Thank you all very much.
And then, next, we're moving on to item D, under New Business, which is a first read of a policy revision, and Ms. Haynes.
Chair Cobb, Vice Chair Perezza, Board Members, good evening. Tonight, we're proposing revisions to Policy 5220, collections and solicitations, and it is on the agenda tonight as a first read. To highlight some of those changes, the first one being in number four, it eliminates the approval from the Office of Community Schools for the advertising of flyers as it relates to fundraisers. In number five, it eliminates the approval of the Board for fundraisers, leaving that approval with the superintendent, and it eliminates a specific financial reporting requirement, the specific to fundraising only, as that information is available in school fund and other reports. And then, in item six, we're changing that, or proposing that that be changed, that all students are prohibited from participating in door-to-door solicitations, and not just K through 6. So with that, the information is for first read tonight. Are there any, if there are no questions, then that concludes my report.
One quick thing I'll add here is, part of what some of the thinking is on this particular policy is, we did some reviews of similar policies in other districts, and we found that it's not common to have board approval for this level of fundraising, and so one of the things we're trying to do is streamline the fundraising request policy, and one of the things that has happened is, it can be very restrictive for staff right now. Let's say a coach or someone at the school level wants to request a fundraiser, but they get the submission the day after the board meeting. Then they may then have to wait a whole month based on the current policy, and that creates a challenge to be able to respond when schools have unexpected fundraising needs, or they need to move pretty quickly, and the policy doesn't currently give any discretionary approval. And so, we found ourselves in situations where we've had to deny fundraising that could've led to direct benefit. So I just wanna highlight a point there, that we've done some research on this policy in, in local districts, and we found that it's not common to have this level of approving structure, and so that's one of the changes there. And the last part I'll mention here is, we're in the process of looking, working with our community school coordinators particularly, but also our schools across the district to, to create a more structured fundraising strategy, so that, one, we're recognizing some of our large partners that are very generous and donate for particular things, and we're honoring that, and protecting some of our business partners from reoccurring requests throughout the year. And that's something that is some work that is in progress, but is evolving, and our hope going into next year is that we can continue to evolve sort of a holistic strategy across the board. So I wanna thank Rachel for, for taking the lead on reviewing and kind of diving into the details here, so I wanted to add those particular points before the Board asks questions or comments.
Any additional questions for Ms. Haynes this evening?
I guess I just have one question. There will be some type of document that the person requesting this would have, the principal would have and sign, and then you sign, just to make sure it's followed through, because I think we've had situations before that there was solicitation going on, and maybe the principal wasn't familiar with it. So there will be documentation that will be signed, is what I'm asking.
That's correct, and I believe our plan is to use the current spreadsheet submission form, which requires the first of the principal's approval on that, and then it comes to my office, and then we'll archive those, and those will be available, you know, for reporting structure to the Board. And one of the things that we plan to do pending the Board's approval of this is intensify training on staff about the approval process, but particularly about the, the timing and the awareness of, we're a small community and there are but only so many partners, and so really recognizing that. I think there's, there's some work to do on planning that out and recognizing how and when we ask community partners to partner with us. So I think there's work to improve there, but I think this is a solid first step in being able to streamline that. But solid points about the approval structure, Dr. Williams.
Any additional questions for Ms. Haynes?
And there, there are gonna be plans to share this with booster clubs, organizations that work hand-in-hand with the schools to help them with fundraising?
I think that's a great question. I think that highlights, yeah, the answer is yes. Board Member Warden, I think that also highlights some of our work to train, get a more flexible policy that allows reporting, or approval, rather, and then also bring some of our organizations together. So our boosters and some of our philanthropic organizations don't require this level of approval, but there are some times where they work hand-in-hand with schools and support them, so that's one example. You know, but if you think about where we are now, we've got a philanthropic foundation, we have boosters, we have PTAs, we have the community schools coordinators, we got a lot of people going out, bringing in a lot of things, and we got a lot of people that wanna support, but I think it highlights the need for us to continue to build a deep strategy and bring these partners together. We're not where we wanna be with that, but I think we're recognizing through some of this approval flexibility, the need to even go deeper in that place. So I think the short answer is yes, but I think it highlights work to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Okay, that is the end of our New Business this evening, so we are at the point where we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
I've moved to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Boggs. Any other discussion? Thank you, Student Board Members, for your service. Can I get a positive vote to adjourn with a show of hands? Let the record reflect, we are adjourned.
My gym jacket on the floor. Hey, Brianna, make them open their presents. They haven't opened their presents from us, from everybody, and the board members. They need to open their presents.